Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest. You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Grafton Select Board Meeting.
...... So, next. And you've got your other agenda. It's not all the things I thought. I told. We have the minutes of the regular meeting on my first fact from three. Our regular sessions are planned for the next five to nine. Now. Okay, remember, that you have nothing to improve on the second.
Hello.
Second.
No further discussion, all favor of the two leaders minutes as presented on four. I put something to what we say I. Hold. All right. Okay, so we have one. You want to go, Michelle? Okay.
It means when you can put it down if they want to. I made copies of the pro forma budget for everybody. So this one. Yeah, and then. So I made copies of the pro forma budget for all of you. And then I made you. I made one copy of sort of the breakdown of what we did last year, what we did, what we're planning to do for the rest of this year and then next year in terms of the building. Because that's our, one of our biggest expenses right now. And then this is a copy for you of the building assessment that we had in terms of energy efficiency, plus also infrastructure and maintenance. So we had somebody come down. So this is a full report. I thought maybe it'd be good for you all to have a copy of that too, just on record. Great. Thank you. But I just made one copy of that, so I was using a whole bunch of paper. Yep. So what is it most helpful? For us to go over for you? What do you, what do you want? What?
There's, you know, what you, what they like or what they want.
Yeah. Okay. That's what I figured, but I just wanted to make sure. So we are, I think we're, yeah, we're definitely at seven thousand five hundred now. And we're asking to go to eight thousand five hundred. And this is almost completely due to the work that we're doing on the building. We had that report done in August. And as we sort of already knew, there has been a lot of deferred maintenance. And it, and the board is now giving them due diligence to take care of it. So just very briefly. In two thousand, fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, we completed the interior painting of the circulation room and the reading room and insulated the basement. And the only reason we were able to insulate the basement is the money that Liz Binkowski directed toward the library when she retired from the more of the Women's Foundation. They gave us a grant. And then we used that grant money to go forth and raise money for heat pumps. But when we did the inspection, when we had the assessment done, they told us the energy efficiency, they told us that the building wasn't even close to tight enough to have heat pumps work at all. So we're working away on insulating the basement, the two attics, and then taking care of the rest of the deferred maintenance. It turns out that we may even have to be asphalt, asphalt roof reshingled as well. It's probably done maybe almost thirty years ago. We're not really, it's not even clear when it was last done. So, and of course, that will impact any insulation need to have done in the attic underneath. So for the next, the rest of, rest of this fiscal year, we have enough money from the capital campaign that we, because Liz wanted us to raise an additional matching amount and Liz's amount to probably completely finish insulating both attics. It will depend upon what, what the cost of our, everything when we did it, when we put it up to bid. But we should have enough to do. But we still need to do in two thousand twenty-five. The roof, the porch is showing some real issues. There's a rotted board on the porch, and that's causing the slats as you enter in the door, right at the door, to buckle up, which is a safety issue coming in and out of the library. And then we have a fire escape door, which doesn't close properly. And it has rot all around it from the second floor, which is the only exit, the only door out. That has to be taken care of because that's also a safety issue. And then there's some rot and some peeling on the southern side of the building paint and that sort of stuff. Well, Kathleen and I were talking about only that Monday. We're saying it, we're glad we have this report from Burlington, but it feels almost a little overblown to us to be dealing with a lot, a lot of buildings. But this board has got a great plan for working through it little bit by little bit. And we are very fortunate to have the money from Liz and then the responding donations from the town, from the people in the town to get us started on finishing up all of the insulation. And then we'll be able to come back around and look at heat pumps again. And it's unclear whether we'll really, we might have to go to grant money to the state. There is apparently some grant money that's likely coming down the pipe to the Department of Libraries in terms of doing infrastructure, but that hasn't been determined yet. So we would definitely be applying for that for heat pumps if we get the building tightened up enough. But right now, we're looking, even without heat pumps, we're looking at insulating the two attics, which we think we can handle with no additional funds. But then we've got the porch, the fire escape door, and then the painting at the back of the building so we don't have additional rot there. And then some other minor things like the recommend, like adding, switching out windows a little wide of all the assessment. Yeah, we're losing a lot of heat through that, but that's, that's very, that's very important to do. And then the other thing is that when the Vermont League of Cities and Towns Assessment was done, they really would like us to address a number of electrical issues and then a sort of an alert system in case the building were cut on fire, which we've never had before. And so we haven't even begun to deal with that yet. There, I know that when we had the inspection done, people said there might be a little bit of city grant money available for that, but we're still trying to find a certified electrician to take a look at it. All, and we have that taken care of. So it's, it's building, 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 building right now, trying to keep that historic building and get it repaired and get it tightened up even more in terms of energy efficiency. Like I recorded last year, we are having great results from the donation of the panel and a half of solar power from the solar site in Cambridge Fort. He brought down our electric bill. It was never that high. He brought it down, it brought it down from about fifty-five to sixty and lumped down to twenty-three, twenty-four. So if we ever can get tightened up to have heat pumps working there, that's great that we have that solar panel and a half that's been donated to us and that feeds into green match power bills. But right now, we've been told that heat pumps are not going to be active in the building because it's still too late still. So so that's, that's where we're at. And that's what we're looking at.
So, and then did you give more about that?
Exactly. Yeah. And if you have any more questions about work that's planned and works, work that's being completed and where we're at in terms of what's up there within the capital campaign. I did a sort of a bullet list on that, I've given it to Morgan. And I can also, Morgan sent that to me all by email. Yeah. So we can distribute it. Okay.
Anybody have any questions?
We, we have someone stuck in the building for fire codes. Like that alarms and stuff, he's fired.
Yeah, that would be the Vermont League of Cities and Towns that does that. It's because we're covered through the town's insurance. You, you, you bill us for that and we then we pay you for it, but we're, we're covered. The whole building is covered through the Vermont League of Cities and Towns Insurance.
And did you have anybody in general that just some general affairs for you? Since you, that, a lot of you.
We are now, we came from another handyman because one of our board members had somebody who had done some minor work and he's not able to do it anymore physically. So I just actually spoke with Steve Nolan because he's very skilled. And he just doesn't have the time to do it. He gave me a couple of names and then maybe reaching out for a few more people. It is definitely a need for us right now. We're having a tendency at the time finding an electrician because the board wants them to be, they're able, they have to be master electricians. They want them to be able to get the permits from the state. So, and in town, Lynn, Gus Plummer isn't qualified or Al doesn't want to do it. We have to look elsewhere. If anybody knows, if anybody who's a really decent handyman who could handle the sort of the most complicated repairs on porch. Because of course, we have to be careful of that because we don't know how much of the support that, that second balcony is, is taken on by the pillar and the pillar.
Did you contact Roger Fish? I think the town.
Yes, that's one of the people who's on my list to call.
How you was going through repair any time.
And you had a good result with. Yeah, yeah, that's very invaluable mention to me as well. I'm going to be reading out to him. Yeah. And I'm assuming he can ensure, we have to hire somebody who's a humor.
Well.
Yeah, you can say. That's great, thank you. Yeah, that's good because I, that was one of my to do lists for this week is to read out to him.
So I, I, I'm assuming then we want to get a approval from the board or we might wish that side for that increase.
Well, usually we'll go over the next time we're going with our eyes.
So we'll take your interest and maybe we'll be needing in some time where you are told.
Okay, thank you. And then I apologize, but I've got, I've, I've got to go.
Oh, no, no. Thank you for.
Okay, okay.
Who's here something prior?
Thank you, Bill. Let me step one. How was your set?
Good.
Was it successful?
Yes. It was one of the. Oh. So. Then hold it on a number set yet, but I don't feel like to see any changes with it. So if we look down through on the twenty-four, twenty-five columns, it's level funded, same as last, last two years. And then to the right of that is the graph and support. So if you go down through each line item and says where what that twenty-nine, nine fifty is going for. All those columns add up. And as of January first, we did start there in town of Athens, so there's a line there for what Athens, that's what they're going to do. It averages out that Athens is about a fifth of the call with Grafton. So every, all of their figures are a fifth of the Grafton figures to make everything fair and legit for everybody. So basically, everything is level funded from last year. Happy to ask you to answer any questions with the other. So you, you turn around once. Yeah. Yeah. Well, three years.
Does anybody have anything else? And well, Rob? Hmm? Thank you. Thank you. I'll be. All right. And. Ready? Steve?
It's okay, I'm going to hijack five minutes of the time.
Oh, can you pass?
One gave off a budget.
Oh, yeah. I haven't, but I will, it's right here.
All right, Abby, let's get to a.
So, yeah, it's, it's not a, this is not a setup, but so I, I was appointed to the Vermont Regional EMS coordination study, which is an important project that started mid-year with a report to the legislature that's due December first. And I'm representing the first response agencies in the state of Vermont. And as you've been going around and listening to what folks are saying about the challenges of EMS in their various areas, it occurred to me we don't have a quick conversation about what's laying out of the EMS and Grafton on a regular basis. So if it's okay, I'm just going to grab a couple of minutes and just talk about what's sort of the state of Grafton rescue. I put it in the annual letter that goes into the town report, but I thought it might be a worthwhile quick conversation. So if you, you know, if you pay attention to the various news outlets around the country and within Vermont, Mercy Medical Services is under a lot of stress in the country. You have services that are closing. Within Vermont, you've got services that are trying to transition and volunteer to pay. You have challenges in terms of recruiting professionals and competition across different agencies. So, you know, basically, it's, it's unstable patient, I guess, if I was writing a patient care report. You know, fortunately for us, we don't have those issues. So the couple of challenges that we do have within Grafton, which we talk about within our squad pretty regularly is we don't, we don't lack for number of people. What we lack for right now is level of people. So we are an advanced level provider within the state licensing scheme, which means that we can do some advanced type support, things that other providers cannot do. About ten percent of our calls require that level of care or getting that level of care right now. And currently, we only have two folks that are licensed at that level. So, you know, we talked about it within the squad, making sure that we have some people plans or at least keep people motivated to move on to that. But you, you know, again, it's a stressor within providing care within the community. That would be one that within a couple of years, when I don't get up in the middle tonight to go to Paul or Rachel, that, that would be an issue, but we're working on that. The other potential stress that we have is our primary ambulance service. So even though that we, Grafton don't have a challenge, Golden Cross, which is our primary ambulance service, does have some challenges. So all the things I was talking about originally in terms of staffing and recruiting and retaining people and just staffing up to the appropriate level of calls, you know, basically, EMS calls are you know, nationally, there's more people relying on us. So about seven percent of the calls that we have in Grafton, where we've contracted with Golden Cross, are covered by mutual, you know, mutually. That means that Golden Cross decided they don't have ambulance available and Paul will go to be the rescue agent for Chester typically. Our neighbors in Saxon River to the east of us are actually getting occasional service by Volvo. So there is stress in the system, you know, at that end. I know that they're aware of it, they're trying to work through it. But those are the two places where I see Grafton having, you know, some issues that we just need to be conscious of. I put here the link. So this coordination study is inviting input from you know, town residents, community members, you know, basically anybody who thinks they have something to say. I put the link into this, this sheet here, the town, or anybody who would like to make a comment. Folks in the audience or lying who don't have access to this link can drop me an email like graftonrescue@vermontteld.com and I will provide that to you.
I can also come to Morgan and yet.
Perfect. We do have two members that are within our squad that are working that way for the EMT courts. They elevate themselves from the place that they're at currently, which is a good thing. And we had one registered nurse in town who's actually working her way through the EMT challenge. So potentially by spring next year, we've got three additional EMTs on, onboard, up from their basic license that we have currently. We absorbed, as Robbie mentioned, you know, both were in the same boat here. We've absorbed coverage for Athens really with no issues. I think none of us are really sure how that was all going to play out. I pulled some call statistics this morning. You can see that basically ninety-eight percent of the calls in the two communities are getting two, one people, which is on a yield. We've covered all our calls, so the other two percent ended up having one person. And those might have been things that were fairly innocuous, I'm thinking in terms of maybe lift assist or something like that. Eighty-four, eighty-four percent of our calls end up with four or more members. So we've got a pretty accurate crew. If you call like one of them, this is a good chance you will have too many people as opposed to not enough. Licensing for the squad is on a three-year cycle. We just went through a renewal and were approved. I just put this down there, you know, it's never mentioned, but just so that you can know. The, the state is enforcing background checks on our members. That's always been the case, that they asked for that to happen, but they're going to be pushing us to do this. So people in their license go through both a criminal and abuse background check, and this will now be done on a by annual basis so that people showing, again, showing up your door also have some level of clearance for these sorts of things. And the final bullet, just in terms of what's going on, we have a, our rescue vehicle is now at fifteen plus years, which is technically the end of the service of a life. And we formed a truck committee and they're starting to look at options for either replacing or remounting the the back end of that vehicle. You know, you'll note from our financials, we have a pretty substantial reserve and that most of that came from over over generosity by the community who purchased the first truck. And we've added to it over the course, but we expect all of that to be used to the, to make the purchase of the replaced vehicle. So that's sort of a stated thing. If anybody has any questions, otherwise I'll move into budget. All right. So in terms of the, the budget, to highlight the one that I get, where, basically, we've moved to for us, the simplest way to do this is just to have a consolidated or an integrated budget. So basically, the way we've done this is we've taken the cost of, or our estimate of the cost of operations. We estimate what proportion of that is going to be covered by donations from the community. And then we divide the remaining expenses across the towns per capita. And per capita tends to be a pretty reliable measure in the EMS world in terms of how, how we're going to be called. So that seems like a fair way to do it. We're extending our fundraising activities to the Athens community. And we've upped our estimate for all donations by about two thousand dollars, and we're counting on that. You'll see in the budget, we have a grant from Republic Family Foundation. Those, that money is going to be used for these EMTs, I was talking about before, to equip them with jump bags and high visibility jackets, as we, we have in Russell Squad through a kind of a similar grant a few years ago. We have a slight increase in medical expenses that is going up, you know, fairly steadily over the course of time, as you can appreciate. We're, we're always happy to get supplies, so actually, how much they cost is usually not the issue. It's just, you know, finding a source for them and getting them. We have for our education, so we, we have these three folks going through EMT programs. The good news is the state was able to get some money to do tuition vouchers. So those classes are free to the squad, which is nice, which is why that number isn't being bumped up there. Last item was, we decided to hire a bookkeeper and take that responsibility away from the treasurer. And I was sort of the, the person sort of pushing for that. You know, those two things are so a little bit at odds because a person that you have the treasurer, you want to be sort of an advisor in terms of, you know, how do we raise money? How do we, you know, how do we budget correctly? How do we control our assets? And the bookkeeping job was something that's more, you know, mechanical. So by hiring a bookkeeper, kind of disconnect, disconnects those two things and allows the treasurer to kind of focus on the things that we want them to focus on, but also makes the position a little more attractive down the road because the person who's going to be the treasurer doesn't have to say, well, you know, I'd love to advise, but I really don't want them to spend, you know, a couple hours every month doing, you know, doing checks. So those are highlights in terms of what we've done to the budget. I should have started with the punchline. So the punchline is that basically, we're not asking for an increase. We're asking for level funding at the same rate that we have for the past two years, at forty-five hundred dollars. Right? Anybody have any questions?
Um. Yeah, I have a question on the ER and EMT and possibility shift on to, or he, he told to A.
You know, we've had a, a good point. We've had a discussion or CD, so we're still trying to figure that out. You know, I think people have been to, you know, things like maybe not in the ER environment, like telling reservation about what they've done or this, but we are discussing, so that, that's possible. Whatever.
Thank you for.
Any other question?
Thank you for your support.
Go ahead. I just say one thing about Grafton going out really. On the Biden nineteen P T equipment, there's a big negative there in the pressure thirteen seven in the week. Turned out here. Which would have been in the last year, central year, but we've got grant money recovered for it between in this, so it'll show up next year, but it looks like a big. But if they're looking down through it, you know, there's more than that. That's. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Like, you know, it won't be like. I, I hear you.
You know, Lee, Grayden Rose, that murdered Ed Corwinner. He's hopefully disindividued on it. Get the shoulder tone there at thirty-five with the pig. Other than that, it's not a new insider.
Should three fight all done now?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Got it. So the blood that you're generating now.
Dr. Face the person.
Right. Anybody have any questions, Mike? Yeah, but you are, but did you have anything?
I don't, I'm in the second quarter of taxes while I'm in the condition of ever doing.
We need the money. There's a lot of expenses to pay the team, and that, that money is not coming.
All right, I do want to mention that I have heard not from the auditors and they are now bringing our final copy of the audit.
Okay.
Once I get the final copy, I was scheduled, I was meeting with Brad for the audit. And I'll really do.
Wait, what? You want to give us some options? What are we, what are we here? Well, we have that, we have that agreement, but I don't know if it's signed yet.
It has not been sent.
No. Well, why don't you, we don't pay the waters off the table. All right. So it looks like we don't have to have a drinking water plan as well, at the end of the day anyways. After they told us we had to. So it's back to just a wastewater plan. And we have another meeting next week or this week?
I think it's this week.
Yeah. So it's really where we are, you know?
Yeah. It's just.
This week.
Moving along with the same old pace. And when you have a meeting that affects an eye and Morgan, we have state federal, different departments of the state, different departments of the federal, everybody's at a different bench. So it's, it's, it's not easy to navigate what they want to do and not do. So, but we're moving along. Any other questions?
We need that motion to sign the grant agreement.
We will have the agreement.
Okay, really?
For the, the, that additional.
We don't think we're into it. I don't think we have the final property.
We did, I sent an email.
This is for the ninety percent? Looks like for me.
I did.
I didn't see the final part.
There was a. Well, fine.
Oh, here it is. Well, it's.
Okay, grant agreement. At Monday's meeting, we'll need to have a motion to approve the attached grant agreement and to appoint someone to have signing authority. That was on Wednesday, the eleventh. That's for the three point nine million.
Yeah, but what hasn't seen all this stuff, I mean, we can't deal with that now. Yeah.
Okay.
So we just put it under our next meeting.
Okay.
So it's on?
Uh I don't really. I don't think so.
I, I don't think there's anything.
It was September, September thirty twenty twenty six.
Is when they were.
I don't think there's any questions.
Yeah, there's not.
We did a good one, I think.
There's not.
We're great.
Hey, Ca- Kathy has a question.
Oh, good.
Sorry, um if you're not gonna, I know I'm not gonna lie, but I'm doing the forces, it's gonna be a mistake.
Yes, we're still, we're still talking about that, because that has to do with the PFAS issue.
Yeah.
So they still, that's something we're still talking about, is putting these carbon filters. In everybody's house in the village, that school has one right now, that will filter out the PFAS.
But there's a problem, because um. One of the agencies say the PFAS is in everybody's water.
Mm-hmm.
So don't worry about it, so you don't need it. So there's one group is saying we need it, and another state says they don't need it, so. I don't know what the answer is, I, I don't think that's, you know, we're not, we're not there to see what. That point is the only way to do that, I'm not. And I think that, or I asked that question, and they didn't have an answer. What do you mean?
But we're staying with the state.
That's the thing, I'm not, I don't know, it's state regulation.
Uh the wastewater people and the drinking water people have totally different understanding of what needs to happen, you know, that's the best way to say it.
Exactly. Anyway, moving on, um I know this, I think. You asked, especially during the uh the uh short term matters. Or we have a, we have a proposal ordinance here. Uh that we'd like to move forward, so you want to explain?
Sure, sure, so it's a regra. Ordinance and it's based on. It's largely based on Chester's ordinance. Um but basically, it lays down basic minimum requirements. That need to be done if you're gonna have a, an Airbnb. Um you have to meet things actually you're supposed to be doing anyways. Uh essentially, you need to make sure your, the, your property is safe. Make certain fire safety checklist, a general health checklist. Nation of smoke, carbon monoxide alarms. Uh in every room, uh you know, appliances are to be repaired, you're cleaning rooms before guests. Uh come into the rooms, there's not rodents in the rooms. Um. One thing what I added in after Joe and I talked was, uh there's a worry. That um these bigger rental units will have. Uh overu- the septic systems will be overused, uh and there would be. If you have more than eight occupants in your, within your rental unit, you'd have to have your septic tank pumped. Every, once every two years as opposed to once every four years. There's also in this would be a registration fee. So every year, you'd have to fill out this application, file it with Morgan or the pound administrator, basically. And you have to pay the application fee that goes along with it. Uh it's a different fee if you live here or if you don't live here. Uh it's a hundred and fifty dollars per year for hosted rentals, so if you live here. Uh at the rental site, it's a hundred and fifty dollars per year, if you don't, it's three hundred dollars per year, that's the application fee. And then there's also um the fines associated with violations of the ordinance. Uh which are, the way they're strapped right now are much lower than how they did it in Chester, actually, it's. Twenty five dollars per day for the first offense, fifty dollars per day for a second offense. Hundred dollars per day for a third offense, then two hundred and fifty dollars per day, plus a twelve month revocation with a person's ability to operate. Their short term rental within graph with the twelve months. That's a broad outline of the ordinance as it is currently drawn.
I have, I have reviewed it, and I have driven it, said, I think the fee of a hundred and fifty dollars, three hundred dollars, well. I would like to see three hundred dollars for people who live here and five hundred dollars for them, but that's just one.
I just copied, well, that's copied from Chester.
So you have any comments about the both now or one now?
Go ahead.
Well, obviously, I have an interest in this. Um I run a VRBO. Single occupancy apartment, both by far in the building, and um. Nobody's ever complained as far as I know. I'd like to know why the rate would be the same for somebody who's got, I don't know, eight bedrooms versus somebody like me. Why do you think that's fair?
It's hosted, if it's a hosted rental, if you live at the place that you're renting out. That is, uh as opposed to if you don't, and most people, they're renting out an eight bedroom rental, they don't live at the place, you know, I would tell them.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the answer, because the fee being um subject to size.
It's not size, hosted or unhosted.
Hosted.
Hosted means if you live there and you rent out your rooms, that's one thing. If you don't live there and you rent out the rooms, the other thing.
Yeah.
So the hosted fee is lower than the, than the non, the non.
Hosted is higher.
And the reason we're, we're getting a new ordinance is for the safety of people visiting the community, is that the reason? Or is it a price gap? You know, the.
Is it what?
Part of the order of, you know, income, we're standing for it.
No, I, I think, I think for, I think it's a couple of reasons. Um one obviously is to ensure that. You think the uh rentals are big for whoever's renting that. And, and, and an opportunity for the town to monitor and to understand who, who is in the, in this. Okay. Yeah, okay.
So the money you're generating for this occupation, what exactly is it for? Just to create uh revenue for the town, which you're not really having an expense?
Well, it's pretty, well, there is an expense, because you're gonna have. There's going to be a certain age, the town's gonna have to do it, probably the fire alarm, so. You're gonna have to make sure that the septic's, the septic is there, Morgan's um gonna keep track, it's like, yeah, there's that.
There will be an expense because that, the administrator will have to keep track of the paperwork. They're gonna have to make sure that the ordinance, the, you know, the septic is being pumped like it's supposed to be.
But isn't that the normal, what would be under a town administrator, or are you gonna hire somebody separate?
The, we could appoint, you can, the way Chester did it is they appointed a short term. Rental administrator, which was, I think they just used their town administrator to do it. So we, but it's just, it's added work on your town administrator, so. So there is added work. Involved in it.
You know, it's something like this, they've been having enforcement.
Well, it's just like the septic, they're going to. You know, we don't have someone who. We don't have a police force out there enforcing it.
There's a lot of work for some. If you really want to do the right. Well, you're, you're sure now, I mean. Play like the town, like the fire alarm.
Well, you know, you would call the fire, the fire. Well, I.
They're supposed to do this anyway. Under this, under, under the state of Vermont, you're supposed to, this is, this form is pulled from the state of Vermont. So there's. I mean, obviously, we're gonna have to rely, just like what we do with the septic law. Ordinance, we have to rely on people being, them citizens.
Well, like I said.
To some extent.
Something like this, and after being forced, all that, a lot of uh really, I mean. Uh and it's a big job for them. And the way you can have a town help office, the job, I mean, it's really. I mean, some of this would call the reliability shoulder, but the uh, uh you know, the way that position works. Off it, well, uh. It was important enforcement.
One thing that's easy, one thing is easy to enforce this. We can look online and see if someone's renting a house out of that.
No.
That's easy.
That's easy, it's, it's just that.
And then they turn in this application.
If, if, if you're gonna. If you're saying it for the safety of the people, uh that's, that's hard. Uh but again, make sure that fire alarm, they're all set, they're fine, because they're there. Uh it's quite expensive, and if you're gonna do it on a yearly basis.
Well, we're hoping to save and do it.
No, no, no.
Chance, not a chance, not a chance.
Just the feedback of a bandit sandwich, then you know they couldn't back them up, you know, but in terms of inspections, they didn't. Take more time, obviously, for bigger houses, and stuff bigger off.
This is, but the, it's not, uh, uh, the way, the way that Chester ordinance, yeah, the way this ordinance is set up, the. They're verifying they're doing all these things in the turning of the sun. We're not going out and inspecting the houses, and that's not just how it was set up, it's now checking the record. It's these people, and they're renting a house, they're verifying us to do all these things, they sign it, and they turn it in the floor.
But those fees are just kind of fixed regardless?
Yes, and if they're, if, if someone calls in, like say a renter goes there, I rented this house, there are no fire alarms, the place was filthy. Then we could, then at that point, yes, the health officer or the firewater, any member of the select board. Go in and check out the house, they are, was there violation?
Has that happened?
Uh we don't have the ordinance here, so I have no idea, obviously not. We don't have that ordinance.
Good, I wonder if anyone made a call, that was the question.
The complaints, yeah, the complaints are going people coming here.
And I'm not saying I'm against it, I just realistically. I think the whole. Situation that changed, you gotta do try to enforce something like this, you know, I. Well, I mean, we're talking about the same thing about the speeding and everything, it's not gonna, and like I said, I thought it did one way or another. But if you're not gonna give the sheriff department more money to enforce the speeding, then what?
Well, I think, I think that's one of the things.
Well, this kind of fall, that's, to use that as an example, this, this fall, I'm gonna be the same guy. And if it's just for trying to put people on notice that don't live around here, then wait a hundred and fifty bucks for the people I do. If this, if this is what the motivation is, to put the people that don't live here, that don't profit, to put them on notice, the people that do live here. That do contribute to the power, then wait the people. And maybe instead of three hundred dollars, maybe a five hundred dollars. People that are, have a team.
I can understand for this, policies gonna help for the citizens in the following up, and then fine, but I. No, I understand why you would want to charge them for the application, it's a business they're running, and it's not like any business you open up. The store doesn't have any fees that they have to pay the tab. But you're trying to go by certain rules, I understand the ordinance, I understand the technique, but to actually have your cap rules with your business, for what reason? That I, I, I don't agree with you, you're feeding on a chart on yearly leases.
Well, where do you go up to the town?
I don't know.
Right.
Um I think one of the biggest things is that we're supposed to register with the town, but they haven't Airbnb. But when we get complaints coming in from Morgan or a Ken. Or one of the select board members, they say, well, there's. Problems with noise, or there's problems with too many people in the house, or there's a fire, or there's traffic, or traffic. Um the park on the road, we have no idea who owns that house, who's in charge of it, how many people are in there? Do they have all the things that are stated in here that they should have? We have no clue. So if we can get these people registered, that's, that's part of all this, to know what's going on. Also, you did not add in, and I know I mentioned it, was the insurance. Uh if you have an Airbnb. You cannot go under your, your homeowner's policy, you have to have a fire policy. If something happens, any kind of liability on your part. Um you're not gonna have it with the homeowner's policy, if they know you are renting.
The, the state checklist has all of the insurance. Again, that, that, to me, that was getting. Too complicated, because it was, they, it was asking all these questions about taxes and a, a license. When the goal here is to have the, make sure that. You know, I think Sam brought it up when he was here a couple weeks ago, that, you know, do they have the fire alarms, are these places safe and clean? That's the goal. Um there are, if you're gonna rent, and I know Mary probably knows, if you're gonna rent. The state of Vermont, which you certify all most of these things already, and then if you run, run through VRBO, they have insurance.
Everything you say that they fully agree with the whole. Except if you offer the closing.
That's a good one.
Well, I, I think they wouldn't have ordinance, it wouldn't put, might be true.
Well, I mean, we're in tax office, well, not in the village or anything, but out on the back roads, I don't know how many times, you know, on a small farm. I've been out on one of these roads trying to foul, and I can tell you, when someone leaves their car on the road, I can get around. You know, and I had it back, a whole length of red road, you know, a small farm. And I have no idea, the vehicle law suit, or I get a warrant, but the state bases are out here. So I have to wait to file that road when they decide to get out of it and remove their car, and that's happened. For at least a lot of forewent, you don't have that, that pay.
That, that's something actually, that's not, that's something we can add in here.
Yeah, there should be something that says a respect for local law and. We, two or three things that we're most concerned about. And, and all they're doing is making sure that the renters are aware. From, we definitely have contact, if I didn't get very decent, I had a bet.
Well, that, that, yeah, that is one thing that's on here, you have to. You have to have an emergency contact that's on here, if you're, if you don't live here, that we will have at the county office.
It's, it's become a bigger problem.
And I think that all sounds reasonable, but along with that, I think it should be uh health officers or fire teams, whatever. Uh.
Uh what I did, Rich.
Should start having a conversation that I don't want.
What, what I did, uh, uh, with that, was I, again, I just verbatim copied what Chester had already done. Which is they have the health officer, they have the police, like, we don't have one. Health officer, the constable, and the members of the select board can all issue um warnings for violations of the.
Whether it's a health officer, fire, whoever you appoint to do it in, I mean, this, this will take a lot of.
Well, there's the fee to have.
Well, like I said, and that's fine, if, if you have some kind of an enforcement fees, I can understand it. Uh if it's just another, maybe you're talking about in that society, whatever.
There is, there is, there's fees involved, if you violate it, yes. But again, it's not, it's only, that, that person would only be, they're not gonna go do random inspection to somebody's house, it's not the order. Somebody calls up a complaint, then they're gonna have to do something.
And that's fine, uh but if you're gonna have the person fill out the application and say, yeah, this is all in line. Then somebody should go out and let me see your fire experience, or let me see your.
Well, that's what we're going to say. Well, that's, well, we gotta try.
They don't have the resources.
But they, there's, that would be some voting.
Yes, I wait till someone calls up a complaint, yeah, go ahead.
You said that it's easy to find out who these are based on listings online. Have you attempted to contact host agencies to see if they would let you know? Who lists with this one, who listens to Airbnb, who listens to VRBO, who listens, I don't know how many others.
They're not, they're not, they're not foundation.
Eric and Val are probably has some of their own too.
Morgan just went on VR, like, if anyone got a letter, it's because she went on VRBO and found the address, right?
Mm-hmm.
So you already have a creative address without.
Not really.
Well, I think, I think, hold on, that's what, that's what that is, you've got some names and addresses, right?
Right.
That's how we deal with similar others.
Correct, but it was, it was just, it was just an exercise in buying.
There is, how many, how many there are within the confines of that, I think that's a reasonable.
There's thirty, how many?
Um like thirty five, thirty seven, yeah.
Um, like thirty-five, thirty-seven, yeah.
Yeah, there's a, that state checklist has a whole tax component to it. That is not on our checklist.
I think I did a little more sympathy for the people that actually live here and try to pick up a couple of extra bucks. Versus someone that lives in, wherever. And owns.
Many.
Thirty, these things are quite expensive. I think I have a little more sympathy, that, I'd be a little more sympathized, I've, I've sympathized more with the people that. Are local and trying to pick up a couple of extra bucks on the side, if they're doing it, generally.
Yeah, but there's, there's another element to this whole thing, and that is, we're, we're losing our community because. Um, a lot of these homes were either single families, living back home, or a second home. So now we have second homeowners. And they're renting the house without. And, um, it seems to be that the, that, that every time a house gets sold. Not every time, but a lot of times, it all of a sudden becomes an Airbnb. And, and, and I take, I, I, and that's, that's a, this is a problem that not only in our graph, and we've read, like, the entire world was wrestling. Italy is wrestling, and New York City is wrestling, and there's more than one city. Because their housing for their people is being taken away, so you can't, because it's being bought up by out shooters. They pay a large amount of money, and then they rent it out. So if, if somebody wants to buy it, I think, repeating with that. I mean, Shanker has, what is it, fifteen percent? I think they just banned, right? Yeah, but I mean, they have, they have.
Yeah.
They just banned them.
I think so, I, I heard something about it.
They put a moratorium on it, and New York City has too. Yeah, New York City, uh, said that they could have that, have an Airbnb, they had to live there. Seven, seven percent of the children are now on, are no longer going to be Airbnb.
There's actually two sides to it, they're going, they have no idea that they're the service, the public school or anything else, and it's, oh, there's new sides.
Well, I understand that, but, but I mean, this, this is, there's not a vote here, this is just, we would like to see comments from, from anybody who can give it to Morgan. Um, and this process will continue, obviously, we have to have a vote here and that kind of ordinance. This is a track. This is a track, um, there was a request by some of the members of the town. To do something, so we're at a process to do it, so we appreciate your feedback, anybody's feedback on what you think, or what should not be done, or what should be done. If anybody wants a, you know, looks at a copy of the draft, just let Morgan know, he can send it to you.
Did you have anything on there about, like, taxes, I, I am confused about?
No.
But if someone's going to link one on their taxes, do they actually believe in that one?
That's a good point, that's a good point, those are all things, I mean, different things that I've tried to.
Think of one of them, so I would think that maybe that could be used as something.
I, I, I try to keep it as simple.
Generic.
As possible, I didn't wanna make it very complicated, so, but it, um. I mean, obviously, it's just the very beginning stages of the, so any time that somebody has a very good fit. Okay. Um. Okay, we've had a person on. You have anything to say? Uh, not, we can just hold off, I think. Um, I do want to ask Mike though, I sent you those forms, this is easier than what we had before. Okay, so we'll get going forward, we can just use that. No, I, I, that's what I thought, I didn't expect you, I, I didn't expect you to. But I just wanted to make, I wanted, I wanted to talk to you and see if you thought they were better.
Yes.
All right, good.
Morgan, did you get the email from, uh?
Yes, I did.
Did you want to read that, this meeting, or did we?
Oh, yeah.
I, I probably came to kind of support, obviously, and I, I'm a character by, I think most people might.
Yeah.
Um, I just wanted to add a comment to.
Yeah, I'm waiting because I was gonna, we're gonna, the, the, with every question, there's that. There'd be a hidden driveway sign on the south side of the bridge. This is, uh, on Townsend Road.
Okay.
Um. They live, um, next to parallel lines and Charlie. And, uh, they wanna have a sign that says, um. Um, you know, hidden driveway. Uh, which shouldn't be a problem. Uh, they want, they want my speed reduced, uh, from forty to thirty-five miles an hour. And they want it to be in the sign, move further back. Um. So, so that they, uh, could slow down too, then, because if right in the section there were, there's a service.
Yeah, I'm afraid of this, like, uh, it's just way outside fifty, forty, yeah, forty, yeah. Yeah, so it's forty up into the bridge, right, and then go fifty, right, and it's. And she's like, uh, little shit before something, instead of the way.
It goes on and it's popped.
Um. If I could add just a comment, so I had to, um. Obviously, it seemed by our, our founder's letter, um, uh, it was written in one of the psychobooks. You know, we're concerned about the same thing, I mean, if it was up to me personally, I would love to see any, like. The speed in town, you know, thirty-five below everywhere, kind of like what I did there. Um, I personally don't see. I know everyone has, you know, jobs and get to, um. But it's just, it's really concerning, especially where, you know, our house is. Um, and maybe to my kids. Um. And so I don't know personally being new to this, or first time homeowners, I don't know the processes for bringing that up. Um, if, if I may to, if there's a. There's an editor from a report, uh, in the National Transportation Safety Board, um. And it kind of scared me out, because I don't raise it, kind of kind of, it's kind of freaking out, to be honest, I don't think it is. Um, said according to the European Transport Safety Council, five percent of the, uh, F P N struck by a vehicle at twenty miles per hour or daily injured. His likelihood increases to point five percent at thirty miles per hour, and eighty-five percent at forty, uh, forty miles per hour. Uh, triple eight navigation, comfort safety, similarly, bound to categories of severe injury to a death in a mean space from ten percent at sixteen mile per hour. To twenty-five percent, point three mile per hour, fifty percent, thirty-one mile per hour, and seventy-five percent, um, thirty-nine mile per hour. And ninety percent at forty-six mile per hour, um, and that doesn't even take into account, you know, an hour versus a child. Um, to me, that's pretty scary, um, I don't see any reason why people can go on or any, but forty in town, especially considering. Um, the town, the air personally, oh, but I think you got a hobby that morning, or you can get out of speeding reported.
Yeah.
Funny enough, the average speed was forty, there was, uh, some sites at fifty-five, this. And they're busy not hiring these. Um, and that report, uh, in terms of. Um, offenses that can be ticked in basically by the sheriff's office. That was a ten percent over, uh, sorry, ten mile per hour over the posted speed. And the sheriff I spoke with admitted that he only, he typically will only start ticking people after fifteen. So I didn't handle that in the letter too, where it's like. In the fifty zone, people are doing, going sixty-five, and with no basic concern of even taking it. Um, fifty-five hours. So, I don't, you know, I just wanna bring that up, I wanna see if you can maybe put that to the vote or something, but that's. But I wanna add, since Max is sort of, you know, we're the rate card, we're just sort of.
In my opinion, if you put all those, we have, we want.
Enforcement.
Yeah, there's a point, everybody can get through here, because that would change the world, it's not go all the way down that. Because the cops there are really bad. And that's what's gonna take solve the problem, and more. So there's, from pretty hard to, and once the work is out, then it goes slower. We can put up a hundred times in the blue morning.
Yeah, yeah, I guess my concern is like, if, if that's the way to tick people over a certain amount, and. There's effect, and then, sorry, any reason to be thought, it's been increased, you know, one, two, three, four mile per hour, you know, and it increases quite quickly. So even if it reduces to thirty-five, they're only gonna start ticking at fifty, I mean, that's still. Very concerning for us, being so close to the road and having things open, but it's not, you know, fifty-five, sixty. Or sixty-five and fifty zone, especially where that placement is of the forty to fifty, people see that in the distance, they're already speeding up. And you know, I, I didn't quite figure everyone, obviously, because on average, most people in town, especially. You know, lately too, I just, you know, I see people going by them, but they're good, you know, they're going, at least thirty-five, forty, you know, max. But then the odd outliers are just ripping it in a loud kickoff, and that's probably why I didn't notice it. I just went all out, and I guess to buy their electric cars, maybe too, but here. Going to get that.
No, it gets closer towards like grafting.
What does it do from thirty-five to forty?
Being closer.
I guess from forty to answer, that's from forty to fifty.
Just have, it's a pond, it goes twenty-five since forty to fifty, downtown is going to cut off.
Where did that, where does it go from twenty-five to forty?
Right, well, right is the bridge where they're pond, yeah.
Craft and ponds, and that, that, past the beyond is also a risk of fifty.
Yeah, but basically right there too, I mean, yeah, especially if you're life's being. They're young, you know, they have a young, you know, Moses is, is young too, there's a lot of kid, there's more and more kids in the town, so I just. You know, I, I love this, yeah, I think a lot of people would support it, um, and that's why I would, I would like to raise that, uh.
Well, um, we'll put on a, we'll be, uh, on the agenda for any meeting without moving the signs and the speed.
Okay, and on the budgets and everything else.
And then, um, that. So the next one, we, we're gonna go with that. Um, please perfection, okay, we'll see what happens, um. I, I think it does have an effect, even.
Yeah.
Lower the speed, it does lower.
I mean, you, what, the thirty-five, I'm gonna go, like. I'm sure you doubt, you're very.
Oh, but this is, like, very much people coming down.
Yeah, exactly.
But I think, yeah, something along the young world, fifteen, so we all know that. They'll do it.
Women off the road, with a truck. That people call it in. So they think not, and they. Not the last thing the whole community.
Now, it's, yeah. You can go, what is your, I'm, I'm here, I'm here today. I feel a lot of people have seen all the, 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 hiring, certainly, a lot, yeah. Any other comment?
I did, it's Charles Bonin.
Uh, let. Now, I think the foundation has decided to, oh, which is a favorite thought, will be more. Yeah, I know you had a meeting with Bob. And, um, I'm wondering, you know, something in light from that. That confirms the arrangement. My fear is if Bob's gonna retire. A new person, whoever that may be, comes in and says, wait, what is this, I know nothing about it. But if something's on, if I'm getting.
I, I answered the question. Uh, I, he gave me a verbal tool, Morgan had written, we had contacted his place. Um, uh, the second letter went out, do you please give us something in writing, we will make sure that that is in writing.
My understanding is you're not gonna tear the whole thing out, but rather only gonna repair it as a need effect, right?
No. No, we, we're gonna have to address the.
You're gonna tear the whole thing out?
Well, we don't know, but, but it, it's complicated. Because you just can't go in there, it's not like putting the COVID on the end of the road, there's people's backyard, there's, there's all kinds of wires. And so we're gonna have to figure out where the first of all located, we're gonna have to send letters to the homeowners, telling what it is. So if this process is, is, is gonna take some time. Um, but there's no rush to judgment here, I mean, we're not gonna. Not going, we're not gonna sell any folks in focus, so. It just, it just doesn't, we have, as cool as is possible, and, and, and that's where it goes.
So you have a date and goal for when that letter is designed by?
No, not, not.
You have a goal for when that check mark?
Well, when you create up the lawyers, do you figure it out with the lawyers?
No, we have, we have, we have to, we have to keep it turning, we have to get the surveyor, we have to.
In terms of the work, I mean, in terms of the point gone brought up about getting women foundations.
Oh, no, 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 the, the, we're gonna, we'll be on it every single week until you get them done.
Great, so what's the goal of that, that use of this, my plan would be, um, you have, but you can work backwards to a date, so. Would you hope it would signify crisis, or I'm serious.
I, I, I would hope that you can get the letter within the next couple of weeks, or. They have a board of trustees meeting coming up. Well, he's, they've already approved it, so there's no reason why you can't. Yeah, we sent them one last week saying, give it to us back today. He, he, well, we have to, we will walk on, but, but we don't get done. Some rich down there.
Um, Charlie, Charlie Bonin had a comment. This, the speakers are not working great, so hopefully I can hear him and. Relay that back, go ahead, Charlie.
Hi, thank you, Morgan, um. I heard Seth, and Seth, are you saying that no longer is the water system a concern for the state, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, what I'm saying, Charlie, is we've asked about the charcoal filter that you've asked about.
Yeah.
I specifically asked them the question, why can't, why can't there be one at your house?
Thank you.
And they told me, it's because you're not a full-time resident. And then when I followed up and I said, is that because the filters don't work properly? Uh, if they're not used full time, it's because, it's simply because he's not a full-time resident. Then they just totally changed the subject and said, well, that person was speaking out of turn, and we don't, we'll have to get back to you on that. So unfortunately, that's the answer that, that Joe and I have gotten from these people on that issue.
Well, uh, then, I appreciate very much what you have done, because that wasn't what I was understanding that was being said, and I'm very happy that the town has taken that position, and thank you both, and thanks, Joe. Um. My, my, I, I'm sorry to keep bringing this up, but my problem is with the state, is they keep changing people, and. Um, I, there is a real issue surrounding. The school. And there are monitoring wells around the school, and the standard has changed regarding PFAS. The state hasn't adopted the federal standard yet, but I'm sure they're going to do that. And that means that most of the wells surrounding the school. Are contaminated, I don't wanna use that word, but I think that is the word, with PFAS. And I appreciate very much the town going to bat for, for my wife and I. And I guess for the rest of the surrounding homes. Um, but I, at this point, I don't know what to do, because. The, the state is basically denying any coverage whatsoever as to this PFAS issue. Which they say was generated by the school, and I. I, I'm not sure it's a great idea for this, for the town to give up on this water system. Now, if that's, if that's what I heard, I, I'm not sure it's a great idea, because. Looking at this PFAS issue. There's a lot of wells in the town that could be failing.
Yeah, and the, the, what they, what the engineers have told us is that, that if you in place those filters at everyone's house, it, it takes care of the PFAS.
Right, right.
So that's why we're looking, because the whole putting in a drinking water system is really beyond the town's. Capacity, and it's way too much, it's way too expensive as well.
Well, I.
But, but, but the filtration, putting charcoal filters is something the town could, that could, that. That could, that is something that could possibly be done. That's why we're still talking to them about that.
Well, you know what? I'm not looking for the town to to be responsible for this. I'm looking for the state to be responsible for this. This is what the letter that came to me in two thousand and eighteen. Said that they would do, and uh. Um, Morgan can show you that letter, it's there in the in the files, because I've agreed to send everything I get from the state over there. And all of a sudden, now they're not agreeing to anything. Um, and it's just, it's 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 not a good issue for the town overall. This well situation. I appreciate everything that you guys are doing, very much so, and I. I'm glad that you're continuing to 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 do the fight for us. Thank you.
Thanks.
Tomorrow's is first. We have the perk meeting we have if they send to get back to us. It sounds like something, it sounded very easy to do.
I think they are.
Yeah.
You're talking about what I'm.
Sounded like it's very easy and inexpensive, and it sounded like a, almost like a. Real solution that I.
The state would, the state came down to do, we do all this testing as a pilot.
Yeah, I remember that, yeah.
What Charlie is right, is uh, they they wanna retest the all the wells in town. Because of the change of the standards that they. And if if they do that, try to drive it, there's gonna be a lot more well. That are gonna take a time and effort with this. But that's, um, we're not dealing with, that's something they're gonna deal with. All right, if we have nothing else. Okay, the next regular meeting is November sixth, here at six o'clock. And uh, we need a motion to go into rejected exception, uh, in personnel.
Recording stopped.